So you mean during the.
During the.
Oh, oh.
Oh, yeah. I wish I could laugh or if you did hold your things back.
Can you do that first?
Certainly. First, if we got a whole movie with their dreams. That'll get it. Black, it's a black.
Sure, that looks good. Um.
I don't know what to do. So he's a homing, right, right, it's a lot of sense. Yeah. He probably forgot.
Dollar. Number twelve. Left to put this one in a forgotten. Cantor was the person to get out of that. Before. Now it's Virgil Melton Junior. That you're gonna talk about him doing it out. I don't think we need a commissioner taking care of business, they need to accept. He's probably as well qualified as anybody to do it. But he ought to stay with the commissioner, worry about road and bridge and all of this other stuff we're talking about. And that's part of his job, but the other worry you have a vote too. But in this case, he they're not going to take that, it's gonna be a year. If I handle this twelve fourteen or five.
You had nine and twenty one, or twenty ones, I think the last one.
Eight point one. You're selling equipment. And I understand them from road and bridge precinct one, and then it says ridge R I D T E. And B R I D E precinct four, and we're gonna sell the constable in precinct one. I think it's worded very poorly. Or spelling is wrong or something. But you know, indicate what you're gonna talk about, I'll shoot. Cause I don't make up those two eyes.
Thank you, Ron, appreciate it. Uh, all right, that's all of the comment, the public comments of our house, but we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items that are considered by the routine by the commissioners for it will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless county judge or commissioner request an item be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Consent agenda is the items A through F. Uh, are there any items that a commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye, wait, I don't, I need a motion, I'm sorry. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move here second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton, all of us in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number five, public hearing regarding establishment of a uniform speed limit of thirty five miles per hour on most of all. County maintained public roads in precincts one, two, three, and four, and a twenty mile. Per hour speed limit on most or all county maintained roads traversing urban district areas in precincts one, two, three, and four. As defined by uh. Five, four, one point one oh two and five. Four, five point three, five, five of the Texas transportation code. So I will now call us into a public hearing at nine thirteen. And um, in this, uh, the public can make any comments. Or a public who wishes to address any of these, uh, this road uh, speed limit. Uh, is is able to do so, so is there anybody that wishes to speak on the speed limit setting?
I'd like to.
Okay.
Let me take y'all down a little trip, the uh, for the last seven years, this commissioners court, uh, road by road, if uh. If it's showed a need to change the speed limit, we've done it road by road. And uh. With talking to the people in precinct three. And the reason is, uh, Mr. Jones, the reason it's listed in different precincts is because, believe it or not, everybody in the county is not the same. All roads in the county are not the same, some roads in one precinct are better than the roads in another precinct. Um, that's, that's been verified by by a study that we did. Uh, or the pre, one of the previous courts did about eight years ago. So I recommended this, I came to the court and asked the court if we could have this public hearing on this. Because in precinct three, um, it's my understanding that everybody in precinct three. Would like to see the speed limit on the county roads go to thirty five miles an hour. On the roads that don't qualify for what uh, Judge Reese just said about the urban area, some roads qualify for less than that. And uh, so that's, that's why we listed it the way we did. So we're here today to hopefully get feedback from. Everybody in the county, wherever you live, uh, to see if you're in favor of this, if. Tell us, if you're not in favor of it, tell us. And uh, and anybody, you don't have to sign one of these sheets, uh, the judge is gonna ask if anybody wants to talk, to tell us how you feel. And so that's how, I just wanna give y'all a little history of where we're at today. And then, then after we hear from y'all, the, the judge will take us back into the commissioners court, and that's when we'll act on, on what we're gonna do in each precinct. So uh, so maybe things are explained a little better now, the way we did it.
Better know what the current speed limit is.
The current, the current speed limit is uh, it's whatever's posted. If it's uh, if, if you've, if you live on a county road and there's a forty five mile an hour speed limit on there, that's what it is. If it's not posted by state law, and this will not change, by the way, what we do today, what Van Zant County. Commissioners Court does doesn't trump any state law, okay, we're still under the state of Texas guidelines here. Uh, if it's not posted, it's sixty mile an hour. Uh, you, you can travel if you wanna tear your car up and drive down some of the roads we have, you can travel down that road at sixty mile an hour. Uh, and, but don't. Well, well, I can say that, but don't come back to the commissioner and say, you didn't fix my car, cause I drove sixty mile an hour down that road. Anyway, that's the way it is now, that's the way it'll still be, if we, if we don't. Posted it at uh, at thirty five mile an hour, it'll still be sixty. But now doing it the way that we're suggesting doing here, if we have issues on the road, we don't have to come back to court and have a. Have a public hearing and all that stuff. And just pick up the signs and go put them up, and that eliminate the, the problem. And uh, and that's the way in precinct three, and I'm sure the other commissioners are gonna do it if, if we go that way in their precinct. Uh, I, I'm not gonna go buy right off the bat ten thousand dollars worth of signs, I'm gonna put them up as I can and, and as needed. Uh, you know, it's pretty obvious if you've got a, uh, if I've got a half mile dead end road out there. And all the residents on there, the only ones that go down that road, uh. They're, they don't have a speeding issue on that road, they don't have a sign on it today. But some, you know, sometimes they do, so we can address it that way. So that's, that's where we're at on this, so I'll turn.
Explain, explain why we have four motions.
Uh, yeah, the reason, like I just said, the reason we have four motions is because we may, it may not. It may go uni, universal in the whole county, but we did it as four deals in case. I'll use Mr. Milton example, if he's got a, a road that he's redone and it's a, a wide road, it's verified a two lane road. And. People can drive safely on that road at forty five miles an hour. He may say, I wanna do all roads over except for county road and one, two, three, four, I'm gonna leave that at forty five miles an hour. That, that gives him, he, nobody in the precinct knows all of the roads over there better than, than Mr. Milton does. So that's why we set it in there, at, at, where we, when we go back in the court, we'll discuss each precinct. On uh, on what we think we ought to do in these precincts. So. There you go, Judge, I'll turn it back.
Thank you, do we have anybody that would like to make public comments on this? All right, we'll, we'll start, we're going around this way, so don't miss your turn, go ahead, Jeffrey first.
Uh, I'm Jeffrey Carlin, I'm calling from precinct three, and I do want to meet Commissioner Pearson for. Put this in, uh, because I'm getting and feeling tons of complaints from, you know, when, when we build a road, when we get the road in not pristine condition. People are running sixty, seventy miles an hour. People under your driveway on the county road, you get hit by somebody driving sixty miles an hour. It's, it's probably a fatal. Uh, so I tried to get out, I ended up by a radar unit. Thank you for, for proving that, I'm trying to get out on some of these roads, but you'd be surprised. How fast they are running down my county roads, and it's posted. As if you go down the line road that I live on, people can drive sixty miles an hour down, it's heard with the same law. So uh, I do encourage it, uh, uh, you know, sometimes they'll say, y'all roads are some in bad condition. These people still were running fifteen, sixty miles down, and I'm thinking the whole time, you know, you're turning the car out, but that's kind of irrelevant, if they hit one of our citizens. Uh, it's gonna be bad, so, and we've had some pretty bad wrecks on some of these kind of roads, you wonder how, and where we have the town, you know, the kind of road. So if you're driving sixty miles an hour, that's fine, so I'm gonna convene all for, for putting this out and, and hopefully. Uh, because every complaint I get, I send to the commissioners office, so they're, they're getting these, I get them and they're getting them because I'm telling people to, to go to the commissioners and ask them. For the speed limit, so I, I appreciate it, I mean.
Thank you, all right, gentlemen, I'm back.
Uh, I'm in Baguette Gates, live over in, uh, coming between Real Park and Edwood, on Van Zant County Road thirty four, thirty two. We've been there about a little over two years now, we just live out there. It is a one, maybe one and a half lane, white rock road. Little tunnels in winter time, you know, it happens. Uh, but we'll have people. Those office people, they run down that road at forty five, so, and I'm, I'm slow as, you know. Dead end road, it doesn't go anywhere. And that, that, they'll turn around and go back, they say the same thing over and over. I know we have children through the next door to us on the left, one on the right, come down at the end of the road, it's a whole quarter of a mile long, so. Uh, then, we need to slow it down. When you come into this edition off of eighty, thirty four, twenty seven, I'm pretty sure that right. There's a sign that says no alley, the next sentence is twenty. Then you turn onto our road, apparently state law, now it's exactly, good luck, I just don't see how that's gonna happen. It's. You know, I don't, I don't know if anybody is actually running that fast down that road, but. Uh, if they can, somebody will. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Mr. Jones, did you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Like most of y'all know, the Y'all Ronnie's up, this is precinct three. Road number twenty five, twenty one. And the question I got, ours was posted twenty five, I don't know what it's doing. I followed two cars the last thirty days, it was driving in excess of eighty. Because I got it at eighty and it's still throwing away from me. So we're telling them how fast they, it's a decent road, it's not a two lane road. But Virgil has fixed the road very well, except. Who's gonna enforce all this even if you pass it? Are you gonna slow anybody down? You have it on my road. You could put it back up to a hundred and you might get where they're legally driving. But somewhere you gotta decide if you're not gonna have it enforced while you're passing anything. And if you're gonna have it enforced, how many officers are you gonna hire to cover it? And then we have the money for that. The way it's going, we're gonna be back at debtor counties, instead of debt, you break down. I think we're pretty close to that now with our speed limit, because ours passed.
Thank you, man. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject? I, I would like to point out that uh, in, in relation to what Ronnie said, uh, the speed limits are only enforceable. Uh, if they're posted. So if, if there is a county road, even though we approved the thirty five mile an hour for all county roads, it has to be posted for that to be. Uh, enforceable, what I mean enforceable means, Mr. Carlin can give you a speeding ticket for driving over thirty, over the posted speed limit. So that's the only time that, that it would be enforceable, is when it's posted for that, so. Any other comments from the commissioner?
I do, Mr. Jones, uh, I, I believe that, I'm pretty sure that your speed limit on your road is posted at thirty five. Thirty five, yes sir.
We first went up at forty five, twenty years right now.
Yeah, if you, when you take a lift off to two forty three, under, yeah. It's thirty five. Well, now that's, that's true, but, but it is posted at, at thirty five.
Yes, it's posted, that's a point out there.
Yes, sir.
But now, who's gonna enforce?
I understand.
All right, where is that, anybody?
I have a question.
Yes.
For the benefit of the viewers, the public. We set them all to thirty five, if somebody lives on one of these roads that could be trans. Down at forty five, fifty miles an hour, and they want to have their speed increase to that, what would be the process?
I can answer that, it's exactly what we're doing now, uh. You, any, anytime, uh, Commissioner Pratt, anytime you change the speed limit from what it is already set at. Uh, you have to do it properly, you have to have a, a. Public hearing, uh, and, and on that, now there is, uh, Mr. Milton and I read another law that's in the statute that the commissioners court has the. Uh, for, uh. Right, or privilege, however you wanna say it, to, to adjust those speed limits. But in, in my understanding of it, if you go it that way, you have to do a traffic study. Instead of a public tenant, uh, you've got to, if I understand it right, you have to either have one of the two. Uh, you have to have a traffic study to alter that speed limit, or you have to have a public bill. And, and, and that. Public, public hearing, in my opinion, is a lot. Uh, less expensive than we would have to hire somebody to do that traffic study. Now, state, and that's exactly the way the state does it, if, uh. We want, we're approached the state of Texas to slow the speed limit down out here on highway sixty four right before you get to I twenty. And uh, the state is gracious enough, when we ask them to do that, then they conduct the traffic study. And uh. But Judge Reese and I went, uh, in a meeting the other day where they discussed that, and they did, there's a traffic study, and the traffic study, although there has been. An a, a fatality accident out there, with all the vehicles that are going down it, it really doesn't, the traffic study didn't show that it, that, that it. Had to be.
Justified.
Had to be lower to, to, uh, lower speed limit. Uh, now I understand the people that lost families out there will not agree with that traffic study. Uh, so uh. If there's, if there's only one car going down there and you have a satellite to ride on it, then it's, that traffic is what does, you say, you go better lower. But there's thousands of cars going down there, and unfortunately, you have, you have one accident, that, that doesn't qualify to be lower. So that's, that's where we're at on that, uh, uh, I, I would like to address what Mr. Jones said. And what the judge said, we cannot enforce it if it's not there. Uh, any one of us in this room can go out on I, interstate twenty and drive a hundred and twenty miles an hour. And if you happen not to run across the state trooper, you're not gonna get a ticket for it. Uh, they've gotta be there to give you a ticket, they can't be everywhere all at once, nobody can, none of our law enforcement can. But doing it this way, Ronnie, if that happens day after day after day after day that they're driving eighty miles an hour. I can promise you, if Heath Burton is, it doesn't have a radar, he'll come to this court and ask for a radar. And I can promise you, Mr. Burton will go out there as much as he can, as much as his time lets him, just like. Uh, Jeff does, and, and they'll, they'll try to address the problem. So, anyway, that's, I, I wish we had the law enforcement everywhere, but we don't, we never will have. So.
I'm gonna add one thing. Uh, I think, I created a little forum about six or seven years ago, I think some of you've used it. Uh, when someone comes in and complains about the speed limit on a road, I give it to them. And ask them, would they go see their neighbors and get them to approve the speed limit that they want? Most of them, it's thirty five, most of them want thirty five miles an hour. And then they fill out this little form, they agree that everybody wants thirty five miles an hour on that road, and then they send it back to me. And then that's when I proceeded in the court, so if you wanted to. Use that little forum, I think that'd be good to make sure that, because Mr. Pratt is right, some of, some of them. Uh, some, there's some individuals that, that don't want thirty five, they want forty five. They want sixty five or sixty, whatever, but they are citizens too, and they have a right to speed. Anyway.
So it kinda sums up my question. If we approve this thirty five everywhere, they have the ability to come in and petition the court and go through the process, and raise, to raise the speed limit if the court deems it safe to do this.
That's correct.
Any more comments? All right, I will close the public hearing portion of this item at nine, uh, twenty nine. And we will now. Resume with the commissioner court, uh, regular session with item number six. Discuss and consider establishment of a uniform speed limit of thirty five miles per hour. On most of or all county roads maintain, maintain public roads. In precinct one, and a twenty mile per hour speed limit on most or all county maintained roads traversing upon. Urban districts in precinct one as defined by uh, five forty one point one oh two and five forty five point five three five. Of the Texas print, transportation code, and for the next three, I'm not gonna read all that, I'm just gonna say for precinct two, or three and four, so. Uh, all right, so is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, uh, for precinct, uh. Two, uh, I would like to.
That's the next one. We're on one.
Go ahead, sorry.
Gentlemen, since I've been in office, no one has yet called and asked me to raise the speed limit anywhere. Every call I get is, can we get a lower speed limit, can we get a lower speed limit? I have somebody ask if we could just post a speed limit for what it was on the road, and we posted it, someone else called, but why'd you post it so high? I said, well, sir, it's just what it currently was, I wanted to lower back to thirty five. And when the guilty is there in the future, if they wanna call and raise one, they have that option. I'd also like to clarify the twenty mile an hour speed limit. According to the state code, that would be areas where subdivisions are put in with the houses on one acre lots are tighter. And that it's small, tight subdivisions with short roads, that's where that would apply. It wouldn't be your general third, if you can. I believe from talking to different constituents over the last several months around my precinct, about how they felt with doing a set thirty five mile speed limit. That the vast majority of the constituents in my precinct are for this, and therefore I'm making a motion to adopt this.
All right, motion is major second.
Second, Pearson.
All right, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, item number seven, all that I said before but for precinct two. Uh, do you have any comment?
I do, uh, I do agree that, uh, for the safety of the community and the safety of, of. Motor vehicles and the driving precinct two. Uh, I believe in what I get from my constituents, that thirty five would be a, a. Safe speed limit on, on most of my county roads. So, and of course, uh, the twenty miles, uh, we, we have some twenty mile an hour already in some of our subdivisions. But uh, I, I would make the motion that, that, that we would, uh. Post thirty five miles an hour on all of my county roads, uh, that, that are when appropriate. And, but with the exception of the speed limits that has already been posted and, and approved by this court.
Okay. Well, I guess we didn't really define that, but it, it would, I would think by, uh. That we would not have to worry about, if there's already a speed limit posted, we're not changing that.
We're not changing, but I just wanna make that clear for.
Okay. All right. So is that your motion?
It is my motion.
Okay, did you get that?
Susan.
Okay, all right, uh, Commissioner Milton has made a motion, is it a second?
Second.
Motion made, and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes, item number eight is for precinct three.
Make a motion to do it just exactly the way it's granted, if it's a, uh, if it qualifies, uh, for an urban district, it will be, uh, twenty. And uh, if it does not, it will be thirty five, Pearson's motion.
All right, Commissioner Pearson has made his motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Milton, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes, uh, item number nine, uh, precinct four.
I believe all minds should go to thirty five also, I don't think there's any reason to just be driving sixty mile an hour down any of our roads in precinct four, so I motion to make all ours thirty five.
All right, so motion has been made by Commissioner Barton, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pratt's second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes, item number ten. Discuss and consider appointing Shelley Barr to the advisory board of the Van Zant County Sarah Norman. Norman Library representing precinct two for a three year term starting on twelve, but in December twenty twenty three. So is anybody, do you want to make a presentation, or?
My name's Emily Manning, I'm the acting president of the Van Zant Library Advisory Board. And yes, we would like to motion to. Approve Shelley Barr as a advisory board member for precinct two for a three year term.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner Pearson, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, item number eleven, discuss, consider approval of the Woods thirty nine oh eight additional. Flat located on Van Zant County Road thirty nine oh eight in precinct three.
Uh, yes, gentlemen, this is a very simple, a flat, the uh, uh. The owner of this property actually started building a second house, uh, over there for a, a. Mother-in-law, or whatever you wanna, however you want to say it, and he wasn't even, he was, he has the right to put more than one house on his property. And he's actually got the house built and the utilities to it and everything, and, and then he decided, you know what, I think I, I need to separate this from my other property. And so, uh, he cut out this, this piece of land with this house on it. And it meets all of our requirements that, that Van Zant County has, and I make a motion, we approve this flat for filing.
All right, motion is made, is there a second? Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes, item number twelve, discuss, consider appointing Virgil Milton Junior to be the authorized. Representative for Van Zant County to the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board to manage, acquire, administer grants and assurances on behalf of the county. All right.
Uh, Judge Commissioner, you all appointed me, uh, here three years ago to handle all these lakes which are in my precinct. The constructions of, rich structures of, of the dams that are on these lakes. You appointed me to manage all that and do the all inspection and turn in the, the reports. Uh, and I, I did that, uh, we, we had money to do, uh. Three lakes, at that point in time, it was a match, the county had to match the money, this time, there's no match to it. The Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board is paying the full bill for these, uh, these, uh, two lakes that we'll be working on, so. It's up to this court, if you all want to, want me to manage this again like I did three years ago, went pretty smooth, had it, didn't have any problems. I reported to the court, uh, what was going on on a regular basis, so it's, uh, it's totally up to, to the court.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment, good.
Uh, do, do any emotion first, or?
Uh, well, I'd like to make my comment first.
Okay.
So, I, I would want everyone to know we're not appointing Mr. Milton to that board. We're, we're appointing him as our representative to the board. Uh, just like he stated, uh, he was our, he, he negotiated and made sure everything was right, and he does work with that board. And then he comes back and reports to the court, uh, the, uh. Same way, we, we have, we're gonna do several things, we may appoint Mr. Pratt to, to oversee some kind of project we've got going, he's not. Calling all the shots on that, he, he handles the day-to-day business, he comes back and reports to the court, and then we act on it as a court. So I make a motion, we, uh, uh. Appoint Mr. Milton as our representative, uh, to that board.
All right, motion made, and motion second, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, uh, I would like, if possible.
Chad.
Uh, to, uh, to, uh, since. I, I would like a, a commissioner to kind of work with me on this, and I'd like maybe the court consider to appoint Commissioner Barton, just to to see how this thing works, how the grant process works, and just to kind of work with him in this.
Okay, do we need to amend the motion then? Keep it informal.
Keep it informal.
Okay, all right.
Well, I, I think it's, I don't think we can do that, Mr. Milton, because there's nothing on that gem item to cover that. But I think the court's all aware that there's, that as far as me, there's no problem with, with Brandon shadowing anybody. Or, or anybody else shadowing somebody else to see how this, the business of Van Zandt County runs.
Be informal, yeah, informal, okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss consider contract with integrated prescription management for pharmacy benefit management services agreement to replace the expiring contract with CVS. This is, is pharmacy benefit management services is for indigent healthcare. And we've had a contract with CVS since two thousand and ten. And CVS has come back and said that they are, they are no longer going to renew this contract, and so we we have gone out and gotten the contract, and what this does is this manages the prescriptions that are required for, to handle the indigent healthcare people in this county. So that's, that's what this contract is for. So, is there a motion to approve? Okay, and is there a second?
Before we second it, would you amend it to authorize the judge to sign that contract?
So yeah, well mostly with, with your opposition to sign the contract.
Okay.
Second, Pearson.
All right, motion has been made and second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss consider back payment for Ben Wheeler Fire Department. Who's going to take the lead?
I'll get this, all right. Last time the fire department was in the court, we asked them for some documents as far as the review, who was on the board, their financial statements, their calls, and I believe you all, all have that. That's what we wanted to do, but I do have one question on what JR was saying earlier. When it says that look at my notes here, the Shawna Kuhn said that she didn't have the access to her bank accounts, but yes, she did sign the check to the trial starting with file. I do have a question on how did she sign that check and she doesn't own the bank account?
You need to designate who, who you're talking to and who would answer that question.
I don't know who's being answered.
At the time, I did not have any type of connection with that bank account, it was online. Only our chief at the time did. And I was allowed to log in under his account until they quit giving me that opportunity after a month. I was given a checkbook and I was counted, those bills made me get paid. So I didn't feel like I had a choice other than to go pay the gas bills, because we still need gas for the trucks. Honestly, I don't know how they passed it, my signature was never accepted at the bank because I never had access to it. I did have access to Austin Bank, and at that time, I stopped writing checks through that bank account because I didn't have access to it. I only wrote it through Austin Bank because I didn't feel that it was proper, I guess, if you would, on my part. But there was, there was a whole lot of issues that we didn't even solve, and that's why that check had my name on it. I can't even tell you how far back that check was dated, but I want to say I stopped writing checks through that bank. Obviously, maybe.
October twelfth.
The rest of the time, the narrative offered Austin Bank, but I did have access.
But I think, I do think it's in the betterment of our community and citizens that we do have to get this, the fire department in a working order, and they have you have a list of all the calls, they have done without being funded. And I think, again, on JR's deal with the way he feels towards them, that'd be a civil matter and not a commissioner's court matter. But it's our duty to do what's best for the citizens. I don't know if y'all have any questions or?
I agree that we, we need to fulfill our commitments, and, and the commissioner's court did commit to paying the back pay, which is a total amount of six thousand six hundred and five dollars and eighty three cents. That's eleven months of six hundred point five, six hundred and fifty three cents. And we should follow through with our commitments to, to repay this, however, the Van Wheeler Fire Department has not fulfilled their part of commitment. Initially in November, when we asked them for an audit and they proceeded forward, then they came back to us in March of twenty of this year and said an audit was going to be too expensive, and they asked if they could revise the audit part, and I believe we agreed to a review or at least a CPA acknowledgement of the finances. And while we have received a, a set of financials, there's nothing to indicate that a CPA has reviewed them or signed off on in that regard, so again.
By law, the CPA could not write off on that because it was, it was done pro bono, is that right, Chuck?
Yes.
So by law, they could not, that's why we had the banks write off as a good financial statement.
Pay her a dollar, then she's paid, you can get your report. It's not that hard, I'll give you the dollar. I said, give her a dollar, then she's paid, you can get your official report, I'll give you the dollar.
Well, that's not the that's not the thing, her being paid, she did it after hours on her own, she's a legit CPA. So she did it for the fire department. Through a friend that actually uses her phone, that she worked for.
We was made aware, y'all came and requested that we actually said that the friend she worked for would pay her to do it for you. When y'all came to us, and we agreed to that, provided the report would be furnished to them. And gentlemen, here, I want to say, I'm probably the greatest supporter of volunteer firefighters in this county. I got decades of being a volunteer firefighter in this county myself. I've been a chief and running department similar to yours for years. I understand exactly what you go through, exactly what you work, and how you take care of your people and how you care about your people. And I respect that. The, the most sacred trust I believe there is, is that your citizens have for you. Because they know when their worst days happen, y'all are going to come. And y'all are going to be there to help them and take care of what means the most to them, which is their loved ones. And in doing so, they open their homes to you, they open their properties to you, and they say, come help. And that's a very sacred trust, think about it, how many people would you open your door to and walk through your house undeserved and unchecked? You want, but they do that for y'all because they trust y'all. And they count on y'all. And this whole mess has been horrible, I've hated to sit here and see it unfold and watch what's happened, it's just, it's bad. But the number one thing y'all as a board are duty responsible to, to your citizenry and to your firefighters is to uphold that trust for them. That's y'all's job, y'all are there to maintain that trust for your citizens. And ensure to them that you're always going to be there and you're always going to take care of them, they can count on you. And the fact that the simplest way to solve this problem is say, here's the review of the books. Everything's on an up and up and straight, we're sorry for that confusion, let's move forward with life. That's the easiest way to do this, we're over twelve months in, and you're still giving us reasons why you can't. That bothers me, people. I'm sorry. And I, I don't, I don't think that this court should give you this money back when you're so blatantly refusing to provide a simple audit, that the lady's done done. You, you say she's done it, but you just can't get her to sign it because she done it on free time, I mean, come on, guys. Let, let's get behind it, let's, let's get this behind it.
We're expecting to get that from her, we did not realize she was in pro bono. She said she would do the first two hours pro bono. Apparently it didn't take her very long to finish her or review both the documents. We were expecting that to have to give to you. Then she told us she did it all. And that's why she wasn't able to give her utilities, let her add, she brought us a letter.
Well, I would go back to, I'd find out what it would take to get it to where you can get your official report, your official letter where you can release this to the public for everyone to see, and restore that trust, and let's, let's move forward taking your bits. I think that's all anybody's asking.
I don't, in this report that you've given us, I don't see any misappropriate of any money. In the report that you've already given us. So, you know, I, I don't know. And is this report available for the public?
Can it be broke down by a month instead of one month? Year, song, covering the time period inconcessions, you break it down every by a month and show the bill, show the check, show the people. Here it is, folks, let them, let them know, let's, let's get this behind us. Because that's all the court's asked for, when we first come in here, we ask, provide that to us so we can verify and clear this up and go forward. We're giving you taxpayers' money, they're trusting us to take care of that money. We're trusting you to take care of that money, let's show the people you are.
What I, what, what I'm thinking is, and I know we had some difficult, y'all had some difficult times in twenty twenty two. And you took, took matters and, and turned them around, and I believe twenty twenty three, am I correct in saying that you're, you've cleaned it up for twenty twenty three? So what, what I would be willing to do is, once we get your CPA to, to provide a a statement a review of the books for twenty twenty three. And you provide that to us, I would think that at that point, we can then consider doing it, because then you would have met your commitment to providing us a, a statement that's been reviewed by CPA. And I understand trying to get it for twenty twenty two would probably be too time consuming or too difficult because of the lack of records that are there. And I'm willing, I don't know about the other commissioners, to, to just forego that and let's move on in that regard, so.
Twenty twenty two is the area of question that they need to trust, that's why they need that. I don't know if we'll move to follow the twenty twenty three, but we need to release the twenty twenty two and get the back payment.
And those twenty two, twenty two records are also the ones being withheld by JR.
So I, I never had a record, I never touched the record. Tony Pollard and Shawna were records returned over from Patrick Larson to them. At that time, I've never seen a record, I've never had any record, they're saying that, they don't share my statements, guys. They don't, she signed a check, she wasn't on the signature on it, I'm the man who took the check.
Well, if you do have any records.
I have, I have a lot of big work that I sat down and break them. I don't have no records, it's just pictures that we left in our office that I took. I have none of the physical copies of anything, so I was just, I, I was never assigned on the account, I've never had any access to anything, sir, and I just don't I listed everything in my office.
Answer my question, I just want to know if you had anything you could make available.
I do have pictures, but I don't make you that.
One of the problems that we had was we thought if we went to a local CPA, that that wouldn't be you know, the town, to try to get someone else that that anything to do with. So if you would let me, I, I can get a local CPA to do that. It won't cost thirty thousand bucks.
That would be outside of your agency, that would be an outside audit. I don't see where it would be your problem.
That was the problem from the very beginning, we, we always thought that we needed to go out, you know.
No, no, there's no reason to go out, outside, just a registered CPA. That's all we ask.
We can, I can do that. You know, I'm this, this is a sad, sad situation, I'm sorry for the people in Ben Whither, I mean, the I'm, I'm sorry for all the people involved, but, you know, any, anytime neighbors or, or fighting neighbors, but nobody's going to win. I apologize, I don't, I have no idea what happened over in Ben Whither, if anything happened. But like Chad said, you got to understand where we're sitting here because we're, we're spending taxpayer dollars, we're not, we're not out to to hurt either side. But if we get this proved, it's just like this gentleman here said, if you can't show something where I took money, that, that's what I want to see, so I can, so the people of my neighbors will know, hey, somebody made a mistake, they accused me of something I didn't do, and I didn't do it, so golly, God bless you, we're going to try to work through this. And I'm sorry for.
Mr. Pearson, if it would help the board to understand what originally stirred this whole pot was the fire's chief and assistant chief using money out of the department to pay a member of our trust. Clearly goes against our bylaws, paying a member of a vital one C three salary. This is what stirred in higher pot. It's just, we know where the money went. It wasn't a question of someone stealing. It was a question of people following the rules, they've been over the word, spend money without proof. Which is against the bylaws, that's what started this whole ordeal.
But when you release the paper of the audit, it'll all be seen, it'll all be documented, life will go on.
I just wanted to throw that to the board, what started this?
I think we need to make it clear. At first, we asked for this, we got it. Now we're asking if we can get an audit from our county, because we need to get this cleared and settled, get their back payment in the mics. The only people that are hurting right now are the citizens of precinct four. We're keeping, we're holding them back. Because we can't make a decision of what do we want the fire department, the board, right now, what do we want them to get, to get this thing past us?
I'm, I'm with Judge Reese and Chad, go, get your local person and, and get that, where it won't cost you thirty thousand. Because it doesn't have to be an outside, but I'll tell you, the clock is ticking. The lady sitting right there beside you, we're fixing to close a book on last year's finances here, and once you close it.
They're closed.
They're closed. We cannot go back. And, 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 and we, we've got to get it closed to do that. And so we got to rock and roll, because we're fast, we we don't have much time, do we, Miss Hill? So, and, and I, I don't know, that it might, it, it may be next week, I don't know, that's her business. She, because she does all this, we've got to get it all to our order to close out our stuff to show what we did, so.
Mr. Vaughn, would a full audit clear your name to?
It's not, it's not going to be an audit, it's going to be a CPA review.
Would that clear you up? Okay.
What about the, what about the documents that we don't have? We, we think they were shredded, but we, we don't know where they're at.
Yeah, I said earlier, he would turn them over to y'all, but how?
I have fifteen days that we was on the control of the fire department. In those fifteen days, we did take the chip and keep those deals, because I did not know what they would say, it was trying to accuse us of taking money. So in the few checks, I think there was a lot of bill, maybe two to three checks, that was fire processed at that time. The rest of the time, the council froze it, we had documentation, I don't mind sharing it with somebody, but the deal is, who can I trust? They thought of both the charges will be out of our choice.
I would say you could trust the auditor, that they're, they're CPA.
The outside CPA, I mean, weren't happy to, I don't have it myself. But the treasurer that the members elected has had a copy of it, I will reach out to them. I will do my best to get that and turn that over to them, and I have no problem with it.
And that, and that CPA is going to say, if they broke your bylaws and wrote a check to somebody, that was a mistake, they're going to say here's the, where the check went. here's the, for the check when, that was a mistake and that mistake's been addressed and it's not been done anymore. I mean, everybody, nobody's perfect. Everybody, somebody, anybody can make a mistake. And that doesn't, like you said, it doesn't mean that it was intentional uh embezzlement or something, but uh. But, but, but don't, don't throw me up on that, on that problem for making a mistake. I've made a bunch of them, you know. So, and, and that's why uh, I, I say, that's what we do. I don't know how you wanna handle it, Judge. I said, we get that, but it sounds like they've got somebody right there that can do it. We get that and, and let's rock and roll. And if we can't go back with last year, at least we can start uh October of this year. Is that not correct? Uh, when, when they get it, Miss Hill, that we're okay on.
We've already started that. We're pretty bad. So we're just looking at the back page that we got.
But I don't know how much time you'll have to. Okay, should you?
Can you get somebody that quick, close? And when you do, would you notify Mr. Bond so he can take the records over to the CPA that you're gonna hire?
I'd rather not.
Okay, well, how's he gonna get the records to? Okay, you go through Mr. Barton? Okay.
All right, you, Mr. Barton?
All right, do we need a, a motion related to this? Yeah, I believe that.
Let's hope we're clear.
We can't, because of the way that it was worded, it's, uh, we're just looking at back pay and we're not going to issue the back pay uh at this meeting. But we have set uh criteria that needs to be met for us to issue the back pay. So therefore, there are motion to table this item made. Another second, second. All right, motion.
That, that, that's where it's gone.
All right, is there any discussion?
Want to make sure we're clear.
Chad made it in Virgil's second motion to table this item.
So we can move on and get this thing over with, that we, all we're asking for is an audit from independent CP or a uh review from an independent CPA, right? We get that, we move forward.
Thing is clear on this side.
Do we need, we just need it for twenty twenty-two to current and then expect one for twenty twenty-three?
But like, we discussed that, what's the timeline we want? Did we discuss that?
We originally asked for twelve months, twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
You should get that, move forward.
A local CPA, as long as you're a resident CPA, fine.
Great, that's fine. All right, uh, motion was made to table this motion. Uh, is there, uh, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed, like sign. Motion or item number fifteen. Motion to consider increasing hotel allowance for agent travel from a hundred and fifty dollars per night as currently set in Van Zandt County employee handbook. And I guess uh, we have, uh, this came up about from the Ag Life because they are doing some extensive traveling to uh, or major state business. And in many cases, the hotels that they're staying at are more than a hundred and fifty dollars a night when you take into account the hotel taxes that are added up to it. And uh, so what's happening is it's being denied reimbursement because it's over a hundred and fifty dollars a night. And uh, Sandy, do you wanna kinda explain why, what the, well, I can read this out. I'll read directly out of the employee handbook, okay? It says reimbursement for lodging for officials and employees shall be actual single occupancy rate, not to exceed a hundred and fifty dollars per day. Lodging receipts must accompany the expense report. It's employee and official chair room of others. The expense report must contain proof of the single occupancy rate. So uh, now, there's also a second paragraph down here. An employee or official attends a training session, a school, a seminar, conference, or similar meeting scheduled by the state of Texas, an agency, the state or county association. For the benefit of the county employee and or official, the maximum lodging reimbursement will be limited to the single occupancy rate of the host hotel. So. Sandy Lee? Sandy? Oh, I thought you were right there. So, you wanna explain what, what situation we're dealing with right here as far as the technicality in the?
Judge and commissioners, uh, my, my job as the county auditor is to approve the claim according to your policies that you have set forth. And normally, and, and I'm not here to, um, I'm, I, I, I'm very proud of the new extension agents that Van Zandt County has hired. They are working diligently and I don't want to in any way stop what they're doing. But normally, the travel line items were for mileage reimbursement. You present a form to Kenny's office for uh payment of mileage for fifty-eight cents per mile reimbursement. Training line was to go to training to benefit your office, Van Zandt County's office. Now, we've kinda got a little different turn in the extension office that they're they're attending training. They're not trainings, but like if they have a student, you can have them here, switch the monitor. Uh, if they have a student showing at the Houston Livestock Show, was one of the, that's what started this. Um, they're going to the livestock show and being there for their student in the four H program. And when uh they came to my office, the hotels at Houston were four hundred dollars a night. And I was like, we can only reimburse you a hundred and fifty dollars a night. And, cause we're not wanting to stay at a four hundred and fifty dollar hotel. We're looking at the cheapest that we can go economical, but safe. Safe, you know. Yeah, yes. But there, right now, if you go to Houston, it's, they're super expensive. We're not trying to do that, but when they have like a host hotel, or if they have, they're saying that agents are staying at a certain place, we would like to be able to stay in that location, you know, or whatever. We have a training coming up at the Anatol in Dallas. It's mandatory that we go to that. Well, they're trying to get that hotel rate at two hundred dollars a night that we have to attend. And I'm like, great. Well, if we get fifty, that means I'm gonna have to pay fifty dollars out of my pocket to cover those other days. So I can do my job. That's a requirement that I'm, it's a national um training that they're gonna be having there. We're hosts. So I have to be there to represent my extension. So anyways, I just, we're just wanting, we're not trying to change our travel budget and extend that. We just want, if there, there's a situation where there's a hotel we have to go to that we would be able to go above that one fifty, not change our, our, you know, not much, keep a lot of this for the year just in case we have that little bit of flexibility in case that we have to go to a hotel like the Anatol for a few days or I have to go to College Station to judge this. I have to, for the state four H roundup. If I have to stay at a certain hotel where the agents are staying, I'm not gonna have to pay out of pocket for that. So that's why we came to try to.
And introduce yourself for our TV audience.
And I'm the assistant office, I work with the A and Ag Life and I'm the S E H agent.
Thank you.
And say like with, with myself, my, my conference this year will be in College Station. I would say at the host hotel. And our rates will be over a hundred and fifty dollars, but the policy allows for me because it says, as long as I'm going to training for my job, um that the county will pay the host hotel rate. You know, who is Houston Livestock Show a training? Uh, you know, maybe I'm looking at it wrong. Maybe we're not. Right. When I say training, I go and sit in a class and get taught, you know, training on being county auditor. Um, and like when I go to judge four H kiddos for a full week, you know, doing fashion and food and all those things. I, I, I'm not there for training. I'm there judging them, you know, training, you could say training them, but that's not really what it is. Training isn't for me to learn. So, you know, so, and I put it under a training line when they ask for that reimbursement because when they travel. And the travel line normally is, I mean, if you do training, everything goes under the training as far as the hotel, the training, registration for the training and the traps. So, it's just a new it's a new learning curve for my office and our office. So.
So, but you can fix that with the line item adjustments between the two, correct? As long, as long as the budget amount is correct, you could, you can.
The policy says I can only pay a hundred and fifty dollars per day.
Right, okay.
And my my, it's training, I guess the training verbiage is what is
Okay.
is stopping my office from approving that voucher. Because in our mind, training is I go to school and sit in that class and learn kind of audio perfection. You go to commissioner's training and learn how to be a commissioner. She's just going to a livestock show to be with her students. And we had fourteen entries, I think it is, fourteen, eighteen entries going to Houston this year. So it's not like I'm going just for one kid. I'm going to be there for, you know, that time period to go see those kids, go to their, their public speaking, go to all those things. You know, like we've got swine, we have cubs going down. I'll be there for those sort of things and those families. So it's not just one, it's a group of kids that'll be there.
So Sandy, if we change the wording of the, the second one instead of well, it says or similar meeting, uh, if we put something in there or uh occupational requirement or some, or something in that regard, would that satisfy that?
I will be fine with that as long as the court knows why I'm going over.
Okay.
Judge, I think all we gotta do is add that uh one of the calls in there uh or with court approval before paid. And then any, any exception that comes up, uh, would you just come back to the court and say, hey, you explained, I went down to Houston for the, the judge on these whoever, whatever your business was, it was official business, and it went over a hundred and fifty dollars. And we approved that, that exception, uh, and then anything that comes up, you're covered.
I would want Miss Shively to have to come to the court.
Well, not just her, it's anybody. I mean, if you open this up, you can just open it up. You can't change a handbook for just her. You can change a handbook, you're changing for everybody. And she doesn't have to come to court. All she's got, all she's got to do is explain to, to anybody what happened and here we go.
I, I left my email up there, Judge Reese. Uh, the, the, the one that we're looking at now is chatting.
Yeah, Allison. It loves that the. Oh, yeah.
So, you know, what purpose does that have? If I need to know how that is gonna benefit citizens of Van Zandt County. So that I, I can't speak on, I will, but Allison went to, it's NACA, it's a national uh, extension program that she is involved in for agriculture. And she represents, she's actually doing the, the, the state tour, her national tour that would be held in Dallas. That's why they're going to Anatol. They're there for three days this week setting it up, however good, how many people will be coming in. So she's representing Van Zandt, setting up tours. We're bringing people this direction on some of her ag tours. I've just listened. That is not, I'm not the Ag and Natural Resource Agent, so I'm just kinda throwing that out. But I will be going this summer. That's why I'm required, because I'm gonna be helping with registration. I'm gonna be helping get people around. I'm gonna be talking about our counties and what we have and what, you know, they're looking for places to go for something to do. I mean, we're gonna be having the eclipse, you know, all these things coming. So she's able to talk about our county. This summer, we'll be able to talk about things that are going on and that, but also we're learning while we're there and being able to bring stuff back. It's not really a training for me, so to speak, but I am required to go.
Yeah, the AgriLife Extension Service requires her to go and we, we, the arrangement we have is that we pay for their expenses for their travel expenses. So, uh, we don't, we don't want, uh, we don't want them to be out of pocket because of they have to be there.
I agree with you. And, and your River City Ag Life Extension too. I don't understand why they can't pay.
They don't pay. If it's a required training, there are some state required trainings that they do cover. And there's like one that'll be this summer. And Allison and I will both require, be required to go at College Station. And they will cover that training. They don't cover all of our travel. That's, that's how it's been, you know, and so on the, some of those things like for the, the livestock shows, going to judge, I mean, I have to even pay my registration to be able to go and judge and have to take, you know, the test and then pay my registration like I did last year and then go down there. And then I submitted where all I was judging. So she saw every day and there's things I'm doing in the morning, it means I have to do at night. I saw one last week. So, you know, it's, it's part of my job. If we put official business in. Will that be okay, Judge? I think so.
Which is you gotta remember, it's official business for everybody. That's, that's one, that, that's my only problem. You're gonna open, I have no problem with what you're doing.
And, and I don't need.
Tax off to you. Thank you. Uh, but you, you just gotta be careful when you, when you do a general rule uh, for official business, then uh, if you've got another got another part of the county that's coming back in, sir, right? That's official business. They're paying, you know, and you, and you can't.
If you, if you don't wanna make that wide broach, what if we change the uh, hotel single occupancy rate not to exceed two, a hundred and fifty, say two fifty. Cause I don't know, I don't know how long we've been at one fifty, but.
Long term.
But a lot, a lot of uh.
One fifty is not gonna get you.
So what I'm thinking is, what if we change to two fifty and anything in excess of that must come before Commissioner's Court.
That's fine. If, if that takes, that come.
That could work in most instances.
Yes. I mean, I'm trying to always stay very economical. She can, and so I, I would be fine with, with that. And I felt, you know, bad because we get, I couldn't, I'm a natural heart, I, I had to.
I, I've got a bunch of these different hotels that, that I've stayed at that were in excess of a hundred and fifty. This one is Allison and Houston Galleria for two ten a night, yeah.
Mine's like one seventy nine.
Are most of these hotels negotiated by, by?
We, we will try to ask if there is a host hotel. We try to, like, I know that she did a registration cause I visited her, excuse me, with her about this, and they gave her a choice of three hotels in her, in her registration. And you click which one you want. So she clicked it and it was full, so they bumped her to the other one. You know, so I, I have not had to do that. Like I said, I do like my travel when I live to see where it's most economically, where they, where they, some of the expenses, so that I'm not by myself going to Houston or in Dallas. And so, um, I'm, mine's normally around one seventy. Some of them are at one twenty-two. I think it's below that. Um, so I'm just wanting to be able to, there's taxes and if I'm having to go to Anatol this summer, I know that that's gonna be covered and I'm not having to sweat it out for a while. And, and we also want to ensure the safety. I mean, when you have wind of travel, um, you know, we want us, we want our employees to be safe as well.
So if it should be over two fifty, you're gonna cover this?
Or come back and we, we, we're gonna write it, we're gonna write it. Or if it does go over two fifty.
It requires, it requires a parole commissioner report if it goes over two fifty.
I'd love to compliment you for this problem being created, cause you're so active and take care of business. That it's brought this to us, to us. It's, it's good to have you all working.
It is. It is very good. Yes. I, I'm really proud of what they've accomplished and whether that, and uh, they do a, a great job representing our county. And they're very competitive with the surrounding counties too, which that's important.
And I, I will brag because I know this is televised, but Hoffman and Smith County are on our sides, you know, and we're right in the middle. And our four H numbers are as high as what theirs are. And so hats off to our people here. And it's been a real pleasure to work with those kiddos and our members and friends.
And don't you know somebody in Smith County?
Um, yeah, let me take a plug. Skylar Shively is my son. He's the, have four H agents over there. And so it's really nice to rub those numbers in.
All right, um, is there a motion to my, my, to modify the uh, uh a hundred and fifty a day to two hundred and fifty dollar a day and requires approval of Commissioner's Court if it exceeds two fifty? So a motion has been made by Commissioner uh Barton and seconded by Commissioner Lepren. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss consider All those opposed like sign, motion passes, item number sixteen, discuss, consider L three Harris milestone payment B dot one dot three for factory staging.
Yes, children, Barry Black should be zoomed in here to present this.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can.
Great, great, uh. I, uh, I wanted to provide feedback, uh, last week, um, Chad, Commissioner Lepred, and Jeremy Jones and myself attended the factory acceptance testing of the L three Harris uh, radio equipment at their facility in Lynchburg, Virginia. Um, that testing went really well, uh, everything passed, we, um, signed off on their documentation there at the time, and they have now submitted a, uh, milestone payment, which is part of the contract, uh, for that part of, of the project being completed, and that's uh, the, the factory acceptance testing is commonly referred to as FAT, F A T, just as an acronym. Um, that equipment, uh, will be, uh, packaged and shipped to the county uh, in early January, um, and stored at y'all's facility, I think that you are looking at leasing. And, um, so that's really it, um, just, uh, if anybody has any questions about that, I can answer those for you.
I don't have any questions. Is there a motion to approve the payment to L three Harris?
So made. Is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
All those like sign. Thank you very much, Barry, you don't wanna hang around any longer, do you?
I think I might have something a little bit later, so I'll hang up, hang up for just a bit.
Okay, yeah, we can call you back. All right, item number seventeen, discuss, consider approval of purchase of a vehicle two thousand nineteen Ford F one fifty uh, and the VIN number is in the, in the agenda for precinct three.
Yes, sir, if y'all remember, last court, I mentioned that I had two, two trucks, unfortunately, I have some major problems and we're gonna address the truck that's got major problems here two items down. Uh, but this is a truck that I've found at a very reasonable price, a used truck, uh, to, uh, purchase to replace my foreman's truck. So I make a motion that the court allows me to buy this, uh, particular vehicle, and I'll explain more when we get to that thing.
Motion. All right, motion made, is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
Yeah, motion made, second, any further discussion?
Was this, was this a local, you had to go off?
It's, uh, up in Grand Prairie, it's a huge, Grand Prairie, got seventy thousand miles on it, Elton, a four wheel drive, uh, extended cab, not a crew cab, uh, truck that he'll be driving. The current truck, I'll mention again in a minute, it's got right at two hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. That, that will replace.
Okay. Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
Opposed like sign, motion passes, item number eighteen, discuss, consider approval where county judge has signed a one-year lease agreement with the city of Will's Point, the property of one twenty-one South Fourth Street, Will's Point, Texas, uh, seven five one six nine.
Yes, gentlemen, this is a lease agreement for the building, we're required to provide for warehouse the L three Harris equipment and install all the radios with, city of Will's Point's approved it. Y'all's agreement for the judge to sign it will be in this contract, run from January first, twenty twenty-four to the end of December.
So move, Pearson.
All right, motion is made, is there a second?
Well, in my second.
Uh, motion, Commissioner Pierce, uh, Pearson made the motion, Commissioner Lepred, second, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to, to let everyone know, we, we searched for this building, this is a building that we've got to have, uh, to, uh, make available to install our radios as we start to put them in, store them as they came, come in the way, the place to put them until we can get them installed. And, uh, and we shopped this around, we found the three buildings, one between Will's Point and Edgewood, that would have worked okay. We found one in, uh, Van, that would have worked okay. And then, uh, this building came open, the city of Will's Point has got this building up for sale, it's their, uh, old fire department. And when the E S D number four built a new building, they vacated this one, and it's on the market for sale, uh, Chad talked to the city of Will's Point and asked if y'all would, uh, uh, le- lease it to us, and they leased it to us at uh, fifteen hundred dollars less than the, the cheapest one we were able to find. And, so that, that's what this is all gonna be for, it'd be, it's not a it's not a make the county fatter deal, uh, have more county buildings, so one-year lease for this purchase.
Yeah, two thousand a month.
Two thousand a month, yes, sir, the, the others we've talked of one of them was three thousand dollars, but we didn't get the whole building, and the other one was thirty-five hundred, is that correct? So that's where we're at, so it's gonna help us on this.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
Opposed like sign, motion passes, item number nineteen, discuss, consider approval for county judge to sign three contracts with Sunstar Security Services for alarms, alarm systems and just other peace facilities. And, uh, Scott brought me these three contracts with Sunstar Security, uh, they had to be upgraded, it hadn't, I don't think we've gotten renewed in long, long time, so we've been on an old contract, but there was some tech, a lot technology upgrades that needed to be done, which caused me to renew these, so.
So move, Pearson.
All right, second. Motion made, and the second, and, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
Opposed like sign, item number twenty, discuss, consider selling a two thousand nine F one fifty Foreman truck, and VIN numbers in the notes, uh, using Renee Bates Auctioneers.
Yes, sir, this is the truck that I mentioned a while ago, this two hun- two hundred and and seventy plus miles on it, I think it's pretty close to two eighty, and, uh, two thousand miles, I'm sorry, uh, uh, and I make a motion that we, uh, the court allows me to place this, uh, truck in the Renee Bates, uh, auction that we're gonna, uh, Mr. Platt will talk about more of it here, here in a minute, the next auction that we can have, uh, it'll be in.
All right, motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
Opposed like sign, motion passes, item number twenty-one, discuss, consider approval of selling from Roden Bridge Precinct one, uh, Roden Bridge Precinct four, and Constable Precinct one, using Renee Bates Auctioneers.
Yes, gentlemen, I have got some equipment I'd like to auction and, and preparing for it, I discussed with other Commissioners. Commissioner Barton had one, he wanted to auction and the, as y'all have in your books, a list of these this equipment that we wanna sell. Item number thirteen is actually gonna be the the Tahoe that Constable Monk was utilizing his new truck coming in, he's the N E S, so that vehicle is available for, of course, discretion. I recommend we apply it to this auction because that car's seen its best day, it's got over two hundred and fourteen thousand miles on it this summer, they get on patrol at night because it was overheating trying to drive during the day. So with y'all's permission, I'd leave that one in the auction. I also have two items I need to remove from the auction. And we'll come back at a later date. Commissioner Barton's agreed to sell the precinct one, the distributor truck, so we'll have to come back at a later date and make that action. And then, uh, the steel wheel roller, I'll be transferring to precinct three, he has a lot model that he can use this for parts for. That's number eleven, so I'd like to remove those two off the list.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Brad, I agree with you a hundred percent on, uh, uh, Mr. Monk's car, but to be transparent with the, the people, uh, it says that we're discussing Roden Bridge equipment, so I think we should remove that one and place it back on for later approval before we have that auction.
Now, the, the item says Ann Constable Precinct one.
Oh, it does?
Yes, it did.
I, I, I stand corrected, I stand corrected.
Don't say it on the list, but it does say.
I stand corrected, I apologize.
I apologize that it didn't break it in on the list, that's why I make sure to point it out.
Yes, sir.
And we went through it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve the selling of the equipment list with modifications?
So move, Pearson.
Second, all right, motion is made, and second, and, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
Opposed like sign, item number twenty-two, discuss, consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted, we pulled that out of consent agenda because there were items we had to get approved otherwise, so.
So move.
Any discussion? Okay, uh, is there a motion to make, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Milton, second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Uh-huh.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. All right, the, uh, we will now go into closed executive session in compliance with section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas government code. To deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Uh, so, and we go into this executive session at, uh, ten thirty-five.